your host, Bob Pizzini. As you know, I love to have discussions about leadership with people who I know will bring great value to me and my organization. And if you listen to these discussions, they will bring great value to you and your organization. We have elections coming up in Virginia Beach, city council in particular. And today's guest is Linwood Branch, somebody who I know will bring great value to you because he has vast experience in leading within the city of Virginia Beach, in addition to being a businessman. Let me read Linwood's bio. Linwood Branch has strong Virginia Beach roots. He is the son of a Naval Academy graduate and veteran of World War II. Linwood spent summers working at the resort and has long been involved in making it great for residents and visitors. Linwood is a small business owner and has served Virginia Beach in many capacities, including Chair of the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce of Virginia Beach Division, I'm an alum of that as well, and the Blue Ribbon Task Force on Tax, Fee, and Spending, President of the following groups, the Sadler Center Foundation for the Performing Arts, a wonderful facility, the Virginia Beach Hotel Association, Resort Retailers Association, and Virginia Beach Police Foundation Board and Board Member of the Resort Area Advisory Commission, something that we call the RAC. He served on the Board of United Way and the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities. He was selected Outstanding Young Citizen by the J.C.'s in 1994, and the first citizen of Virginia Beach in 2007. Well done. That's, I went to the last award ceremony for that. It was pretty cool. Linwood ran for city council in 1992 and served until 2002. During that time, he supported initiatives such as the Virginia Beach Aquarium, Convention Center, the amphitheater, open space and agricultural reserve programs, and Town Center. In October of 2001, Linwood was appointed to serve out the unexpired term of Vice Mayor Jim Wood. He currently serves as Council Liaison to the Process Improvement Committee, Bayfront Advisory Committee, Resort Advisory Commission, Atlantic Park Community Development Authority, Advertising Advisory Committee, Open Space Committee, and the Virginia Aquarium. Holy cow, that's a lot of responsibility. Linwood is a graduate of Randolph-Macon College and resides in Virginia Beach with his wife, Robin, and children, Easton and Lindsay. And for the record, Easton makes great hockey equipment. Welcome to the show, Linwood Branch.
Thank you so much, Bob. I appreciate being here.
That's great. Listen, Linwood, you have tremendous experience, and we just read your bio, but just tell us a little bit about your upbringing in Virginia Beach.
So, my grandfather came up from Enfield, North Carolina, in the late 1930s. Didn't have any money, went to work at a little place called Kitterman's Cottages on 11th Street and Atlantic Avenue. It was wooden cabins and outhouses. Over time, he purchased the property from Mr. Kitterman and built a new hotel called the Lindy Motel, named after his two sons, Linwood and Dion Branch. It was seasonal business at that time. That was the model down here. You would open on Easter and close a little bit after Labor Day. My father had a business in Richmond, Virginia, so we would spend winters in Richmond and then come down and run the hotel in the summer. So I really had the experience of living in two places growing up. And living at the beach in summertime was a great experience.
Sure.
We learned early on entrepreneurship. We would bring ice to rooms, hoping to get a nickel tip, and ran the Coke machines and the snack machines. And so grew up very early, learning how business works and transactions, also customer service, and how important customer service is. And I think that's helped me a lot in my political career as well. In 1977, the year I graduated from Randolph-Macon College, my grandfather passed away. And my father, who had his business in Richmond, said, "Son, you need to go down and run the hotel." And came down and did that. A few years later, we bought the hotel next to us, Ferris Motel. And in 1987, we tore everything down and built the current building. We have now a six-story building that is a Days Inn with some retail stores, hot dog stand, ice cream shop, and what have you. Also, in my business career, I run a construction company, apartment rentals, women's retail out stores. So I've had a broad swath of business experience, which again, I think, has helped me very much in my career.
Yeah, I can confirm, having owned and operated this business for eight years, that whatever it is you want to do, especially in public life, having a business background is tremendously helpful. I mean, number one, you know how to read financial statements, and you are able to prioritize in a lot of different ways. So that business background really lends itself to you leading in all these capacities that we mentioned. And just kind of tell us, during your first term on city council, or tenure, 10 years, what was that, you know, how did your business acumen apply during that first 10 years?
So, Bob, my method is, I am a conduit between advocacy groups and the public to the city government. That's how I view the role of a council member. So when I got elected in 1992 to the Virginia Beach City Council, there was the original, at that time, it was the Resort Area Advisory Commission, R.A.C., as opposed to R.A.C. today. And for years, they had put together a plan of projects and a funding mechanism that included hotel, restaurant admissions taxes, to pay for these improvements. And at that time, in the early 90s, Virginia Beach had really not taken tourism seriously. It was, Atlantic Avenue still had telephone poles and a bunch of signs. Our boardwalk was the old boardwalk. We really had no, we had the old pavilion, Convention Center. And so when I got on, I immediately got to know our city manager very well, got on the majority side of the city council. It's always good to be in the majority because you can get things done. And I got to know and familiarize myself with key city officials. Particularly, one of my favorites then, and one of my favorites now, is the city's Budget Director, because the budget is where everything is at. So, yeah. So I got the city manager, myself, city attorney, Budget Director, and we went up in a little room on the third floor of the old city hall, building one, and sat down and put together, we took RAC's work, and put together what became known as the Tourism Growth Investment Fund, TGIF, which today is now known as the TIP Fund, Tourism Investment Program. Over the 30 years that we created that program, that fund has paid for the new boardwalk, the Seawall Project, Dune Restoration to the North End, the Convention Center, our new Sports Center, the amphitheater, the improvements over at the Hampton Roads Princess Anne Sports Complex, the Sandler Center, parking at the resort, programs such as the Rock and Roll Marathon, Patriotic Festival, Beach Street, USA. That fund has been incredible and the gift that keeps on giving.
Hopefully, it's going to give us a nice arena with two sheets of ice here pretty soon.
Well, that's what's going to pay for it. And the TIP Fund, over time, has grown to be our secret weapon. And when we visit other cities or hear from other cities that are trying to compete with us, and they learn about our TIP Fund, they're just blown away because they don't have that sort of mechanism. And when things like the sheets of ice or an amphitheater have to compete with schools and roads, they're always going to come in last place. So this gives us the ability to actually deal with this. And it has launched a lot of things in this city that, in my opinion, have made us a much better city. It's one of the reasons why we have the lowest tax rate in the region for both real estate taxes, personal property taxes, meal taxes, by far the lowest between Chesapeake, Suffolk, Norfolk, Portsmouth, and the other cities in the region. And a lot of that is this great industry that we have, and these other amenities that we have that bring in people and revenue. You know, when I go to meet with civically groups and always say, you know, isn't it great that people come into our city, spend money, and leave? I mean, that is the basis of tourism. And I said, if we could just figure out how to get them to mail in the check and not come, we haven't figured that one out yet. But it is a secret weapon. And, you know, our geography is second to our people. Our geography is our greatest asset. And when you look at between the tourism, the military, the agriculture in the southern part of the city, and now the recipient of all of these offshore cables and wind energy coming right to our city, we are positioned perfectly in the mid-Atlantic to take advantage of that and shame on us if we don't.
Yeah, I was up at, up in Williamsburg last week at a Chamber of Commerce event, and we received detailed briefings on all of those projects. The high-speed cables coming over from Spain and South America, and I think Africa, there's one coming from.
And Brazil.
And Brazil. And the, and the ring that is currently under construction in the Hampton Roads area, it's really quite impressive, combined with the expansion of 64, the tunnel, you know, the port, this is outside of Virginia Beach, but you know, the port traffic, all that stuff affects our economy overall. So I'd say, three years from now, things are going to look considerably different.
We, coming out of COVID, the cities that have a real game plan, and a means to enact that game plan, and have not fallen prey to some of the things these other cities have let happen to their cities, crime, defund the police, letting the homeless situation metastasize to all throughout. We're fortunate in that we are dealing with those issues. And in fact, I'm very proud of our public safety record and the investments that we're making right now in public safety. We are set, as you said, over the next decade, with what we have in place to launch the second phase of becoming not only a leader in the region, not only a leader in the state, but a leader in the country and a lot of different things. And that is what excites me. You know, I have a lot of friends, I'm 67 years old, and they say, "What are you doing? Running for office. You could be playing golf. You know, they send me postcards from Italy and these other places." But this is what it's all about for me, is the fact that we have these opportunities. And I think the groundwork we laid in the 90s has sustained us all this time. And if we do it again, we should be good for another three or four decades in this city.
Yeah. And to be deliberate in that regard, and the things you just mentioned, leading, leading on a national basis, that's visionary, and that's what leaders do. They have these visions, and they continually reinforce and pursue and share that vision and that information to get others on board. I'm gonna go back, I want to go back just a little bit. You mentioned the Sadler Center, and you mentioned the boardwalk, and you mentioned the Convention Center, and you mentioned the Sports Center, which is, I think, the Sports Center is the newest investment or reinvestment of the TIP Fund. I'm a consumer of all of those venues that you've mentioned. And just watching my daughter play volleyball over at the Sports Center and seeing basketball, I believe it was, going on at the same time. I mean, that venue is incredible. There are NCAA Division One events scheduled for, I believe, '23 or '24, those are coming up. So what a win for the city, just, just, just with that venue alone. But again, all these other venues, as you mentioned, they bring everybody here. So it took leadership during your first 10 years in city council to make those things happen and to have that vision. How do you approach leadership? How do you define leadership?
So, I used to hang out at Wearing's Gym, and I hung out around a lot of bodybuilders. And there's a saying, one of them told me, that has stuck in my mind all these years. He said, "If you have a 20-inch arm, you don't need a t-shirt that says you have a 20-inch arm." I don't think leaders need to run around telling people they're leaders. I think they need to lead by example. And once again, my leadership style is to be a conduit between the groups and folks that have great ideas, and implementing them at both the city and sometimes the state level. And so that's my methodology. I believe that anything good comes from the ground up. When council gets in trouble, it's top-down decisions when they haven't consulted the public. We've got groups all over the city. You've mentioned some of those groups that I'm liaison to, but those are where the ideas percolate. Those are where they're vetted. Those are where, when they get to a point where they're ripe, I bring in the right staff, and we put groups together. And then, when those projects or ideas are vetted, and some of them need to be funded, I make sure they're in our city budget. And so that's the method that I use. It's the most successful method. It's called ground-up governance. And when the people are involved, and then when the issue is before the council, you've got your support group because they've got the skin in the game. It was their idea. We recently did that, you know, the sports stuff, this sports tourism is big for us. And you got to stick with your brand. And our brand is, to a large degree, sports tourism, outdoor. Now, we're looking at action sports and things of that nature. So, we were able, in this current budget, to have a healthy amount of money funded for sports advancement. And we assemble a bunch of people who know a lot more about this stuff than we do, free consultants, the ones that operate and run these facilities.
I think I know a few of those.
Yeah, I'm looking at one. And we got the ideas on the table. They are being vetted by the Victus Group, who really gave us the great idea of adding a track and field component to the Sports Center. By the way, that Sports Center is performing 40% over the estimates that we had. That's how successful that venue is.
That's incredible. Forty percent over estimates.
Over the estimates.
And opened in the midst of COVID.
In the midst of COVID.
And just really getting up on step right now, and already overperforming by 40%. Incredible success story.
And we need to build on that. In fact, this spring, as you may recall, the weather was terrible. But that Sports Center carried us through the spring. And there were so many events over there that at times, the parking became an issue. It's a good problem to have, but we need to solve it. And we will. But we're going to plan out that whole quarter, once again, ground up, getting the group together, using one of the subcommittees of the Resort Advisory Commission to do that, and get the stakeholders in that, in that area, part of that. But when the Victus studies come in, which should be anytime now, there were three specific ideas. One was ice in the Convention Center. One was baseball fields down at Princess Anne Commons. And the third was this action sports, which I think could be a whole new avenue for us. And in fact, next year, we're going to have the Jackalope Festival come to Virginia Beach. And we're going to find out all about action sports. The other thing, when I came on council, the first week I was there, Bob, the Patriotic Festival had relocated to Norfolk, and we had lost something in the water. We had lost the Rock and Roll Marathon. We were able this year to get back our first beach concert in two years with the ECSC. Next year, we're planning on having a minimum of three beach concerts. Once again, that's our identity. We're going to beef up our entertainment program, and we're going to marry it to our sports activities, convention business, so that there's a coordinated calendar. Because one thing we've learned is, the beach sells and the leisure market, but when you add additional events, it creates compression, which makes, makes business better for everybody, particularly even major holiday weekends. You can't leave on your own anymore. And when we have these sort of events, so we're planning a robust event calendar for next year with sports, convention, and events, beach concerts, and we're back in business.
Yeah, it's a great model, for sure. We are back in business. And again, as a business owner on the oceanfront, you know, I have a top line, I have a bottom line. I have 40 people on my team that I'm accountable to. I have, you know, I'm responsible for the livelihoods of everybody. So I've got to, I've got to really run my business external to what's going on inside the building. And I have to pay attention to everything you just mentioned. Let's go to your appointment, which happened in '21? That happened last year?
A little over a year ago, about a year and two weeks.
Okay.
October 5th, 2021.
Okay. Now, when that appointment happened, and there were, I think, three candidates that council considered, when your appointment was announced, there was, what's the word I'm looking for? The city council was accused of, I can't remember the words, but they were accused of good old boy, they were accused of kind of, I think there were racial overtones, you know, racial-flavored criticism of your appointment to council. So how's that going? And how's that been?
Well, so, being a hotelier, sometime people accuse me of having special interest. I look at it like this. If you want to get operated on, wouldn't you want a doctor instead of someone who's right about being a doctor? So when it comes to this district, I think someone in the industry knows what we need. So, yeah, it's part of the game of politics, the special interest charges and all that. But as you can tell by my resume, I have a wide variety of interests. I've served on commissions and committees that deal with issues all over the city. I don't like to segregate certain parts of our city and pit the oceanfront versus Kempsville, or the Princess Anne County versus Bayside, or, that's not what our city should be about. And so bringing people together is really what I'm about. And so that was part of it. But yeah, there was a split on the council. And in fact, one council member, when I was appointed, got up and walked out. And
That's unbelievable.
But I took that as a badge of, walked out for the very simple fact that the mayor had asked me to come up and address the council. And I went up and I thanked the entire council, and I told them that my goal was to earn everybody's respect and trust. And I've worked very hard on that. And I volunteered for a lot of the tough assignments. Process Improvement Committee, we're looking at the Stormwater Ordinance, which has been a burden to our ability to deliver affordable housing, and we're taking good look at that. And our HR Department, which takes us, it took us two months to hire somebody. If you can imagine, in this employment environment, somebody comes in for an interview and said, "Well, we'll get back to you in two months."
Yeah, that's great. You know, organizations are renaming their HR. HR is kind of becoming this antiquated negative, you know, term.
I believe it was in our case. And I went in and met with department heads, people under department heads. And Bob, I found out that our morale was down, our workforce numbers were down. So we passed a big compensation package and a step payment plan. We can recruit nationally now for public safety. We're going to get our police department's numbers up, and we've got a great recruiting class right now of over 50 recruits. We're about 75 officers short. So my goal is to get us to the level that we need to be in terms of public safety, and work on all of these other issues as well. But there's always going to be that tit-for-tat political stuff. I try to ignore it, rise above it. And I'm proud to have been endorsed by groups such as the police, the fire, associations, the Chamber of Commerce, Coastal Builders Association, the retailers, the hospitality groups, and the Hampton Roads Black Caucus. So I've tried to be out there for everybody, and I think everybody knows that if you want to get something done, I'm a council member that's going to, I don't just come down on Tuesday and push a button. I'm going to work for you the rest of the week as well.
Yeah, that's, there's a lot there. But working together, you know, and cooperating with other council members, and approaching the city as a whole, certainly is, historically, that's been the process for council. But now that we are a WARD system, W-A-R-D, versus the at-large system previously, and at-large meant that all citizens of Virginia Beach voted for all city council members. Now that we've gone to the WARD system, you can only vote for the councilmen in your district, in your district, obviously defined by where you live. What are your thoughts on that process, on that change? Does that help advance Virginia Beach initiatives, or does that hinder Virginia Beach initiatives?
So I guess we're going to find out, because this is our first election under this district system. I can tell you, having run elections in the 90s and this, it's a whole different model. Between that and social media, it's a whole different way to run. But so in this district, to get elected, I need to be places where my district voters are. So I find myself not going outside of the district to different events. I'm very district-oriented. I have knocked on over 10,000 doors in my district. I've been to every neighborhood in my district. It's been a great way to interface with our citizens and to learn that their needs. And I've got, such as the North End, I was able to fund 13 pedestrian crosswalks on Atlantic Avenue for them. They said that was a need. Washington Square, I'm so excited, we just committed to purchasing a three-acre parcel of open space for a playground for them that they've been working on, not for years, but for decades.
Wow, for a playground.
For a playground. And we're at a beautiful site at Washington Square that has little or no open space. The resort area, the key to the resort is the parking. And we really haven't moved on parking since I got off the council. But we've got $75 million slotted for parking improvements at the oceanfront. That's going to buy several thousand parking spaces. We're going to get the parking out of the neighborhoods. We're going to park our employees at a reasonable fee. We're going to give deals to local citizens. Once we have that inventory, and the plan is not to build mega parking garages, but every time someone builds parking, a private, we're going to add on 200 or 300 parking spaces every few blocks. And, and once again, parking and restrooms and amenities are the key to this resort. Sea-Tac, I'm working with them on improvements to their Sea-Tac park that have been on the shelf since 2017. Bay Colony has had a trail and a playground on the shelf since 2017. I've got that to a point where that can be put in the budget. And then, at the Hilltop area, when Laskin Road gets done, at Wynwood Drive, the residents, as I walk those neighborhoods, pleaded for a stoplight, a traffic signal, that they were very concerned. And there were two accidents within a week where people had been T-boned at that. And initially, the staff was opposed to that traffic signal because supposedly it's too close to the one at Hilltop. But I was able to get that done as well. So, and then I took on really the toughest assignment that we had. It was the Atlantic Park Project, the Dome Project, which had started in 2017. If you can imagine, this thing's been going on for five years. And when I
Longer than that. Well, longer than that, when I first wanted to build iFly,
Right.
the economic development back then, this is 2009, they said, "Well, why don't you, why don't you make it part of this Atlantic Park Project?" And when I kind of learned more about it, I was like, "I'm not waiting for that."
Well, you're lucky you did, because you'd be sitting in a parking lot right now, and we'd be conducting this interview, instead of this beautiful building and office that you have. And I'll give the developer credit for hanging in there as long as they have. But when I came on council, I inquired as to what was going on. And I asked Lewis Jones, who was a council liaison of this project, if I could replace him. And he gladly gave me that assignment. So we started having weekly meetings every Monday. In fact, we've got another one today at 1:00. And we started advancing the ball. And to me, I was on the council when we made the decision to tear down the old dome in 1994. And it was a difficult decision, but that building was way past its time. And to put millions of dollars into it just didn't make any fiscal sense. Bob, I didn't realize or think that it would take 30 years for us to do something about it. And if you look at that site right now, it's in the core of our resort. It's in abysmal condition. It contributes nothing to the tax base, nothing to our entertainment. And an apple rots from its core. And this project, I'm telling folks, to me, it brings the Town Center feel and flavor down to the middle of the resort. It connects the oceanfront to the vibe district. And then you go down to our sports entertainment part, our Convention Center, and you can start to see the creation of a real entertainment district, which, when you go to places like Charlotte, Kansas City, they have entertainment districts, where you go there and you can spend a day, because there's this to do and that to do, and all sorts of things.
Yeah, resident, or retail, travel accommodations.
All of it.
Yeah, dining, you know, all levels of dining.
It's an iconic, and that Surf Park, I think, there's only 23 of them in the world. We're going to have the latest state-of-the-art Surf Park. When we tore the old pavilion down and built the Convention Center, the old pavilion had a 1,000-seat theater. And part of the promise was, we will replace that theater. Part of our problem with events down here is, in the event of Part of our problem with events down here is in the event of bad weather, we have no place to relocate people, no suitable place. So this entertainment venue that's going to be run by the two giants in the industry, Oakview and Live Nation, programmed and operated by a 3,500 seat indoor facility that can convert to a 5,000, um, uh, with outdoor seating as well. I think is going to be a game changer. And once again, gets back to our identity because in the old days, we used to have Glenn Miller and Tommy Dorsey live from the Cavalier and, and we were big in music, we were big in surfing. We were big in, in things for folks to do. We used to have things like Frontier City and, 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 and other sort of things. So to me, this project is going to catapult other projects, you know, success breeds success. And if we get this one done, which we're very close to, I think we're going to see other things follow, like some of the sports venues we're talking about and some other, uh, neat things. There's a phase two to the Atlantic Park project too, that's going to, uh, have, give us some additional opportunities for some really neat things for folks. So.
So is that, is that going, you know, that when you read the paper and, and listen to the news, uh, one, one news piece says construction expected to start this fall.
Right.
And another news piece says, uh, the developer is unable, has continues to be unable to obtain funding.
Right.
So where, where is that project for real?
So the meeting I'm going to today, um, the developer is, is going to go add in the, to the bond market in two weeks to sell their bonds. Once that's done, they have their financing. The problems of this-
Will that happen? I mean, will that, is there difficulty there or?
No, I think they will. And, and, and this, this development group is so committed. Uh, they've got significant skin in the game on this project. I mean, currently they probably have $17 million of their own capital. They have purchased, uh, equipment for the surf park that's non-refundable. I mean, they have spent a lot of money on lawyers and, and plans.
They've got a high degree of confidence, I would say.
Now, the city's role in this is we build and own the parking. We build and own the entertainment venue, like we own the amphitheater and the Sandler Center. And the undergrounding of utilities, the challenge of this project and the lesson that needs to be learned is in setting cost estimates way in advance of the actual bids that come in. We're finding that, um, the undergrounding of utilities is more than the budget that we allotted. We're finding that the entertainment venue, particularly in light of now with the commodities issues and now this interest rate issue has really made this a challenging project. But I'm telling you, the city's staying strong, the developers staying strong. And I really believe, um, next month at this time, we will have a project that is funded, committed to and breaking ground, uh, very soon. And the transformation that's going to take place. You know, when you think about it and, and I hear, and it breaks my heart when I hear from our citizens, well, I don't want to go down to the beach anymore. Um, public safety, or there's nothing to do, or what, I can't park. So we're going to address all those issues. We're beefing up our public safety. And I think with all the technology, the cameras and shot spotter and all those sort of things, we're developing a reputation that you don't want to come down here and fire a weapon or bring a weapon. And Harry McBrien over at the second precinct is doing a wonderful job in policing.
Yeah, agree. I've, uh, been to several of his forums and-
Great job.
Yeah, I think he's, he's, he's kind of has the vision himself in how he wants to handle things.
He really is. He's almost, uh, wears a lot of hats, including real estate and, and economic development and, and-
And he's, and he's a former Marine. So-
All of that.
So he's got the devil dog in him.
No nonsense guy. And I, and I'm crazy about him, as well as our chief of police. Uh, the parking we're going to address and the things to do, um, how many more writing your name on a grain of rice or a juggler at Atlantic Avenue? No, we're going to have experience for retail, the surf park, the entertainment venue and other things that are going to spring from that, that, uh, are going to fill that mode. And I want this beach to be something our entire city can be proud of. And when guests come to visit our citizens, they say, hey, let's go down here because it's the coolest place around.
That is, uh, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm also council liaison to the Central Business District Association. And they've got some exciting projects too. And when you look at these two places, plus Princess Anne Commons with all their sport facilities, we really have three areas of our city that really play a role in our identity, our ability to attract tourists and our ability to make our citizens, uh, really happy. And, and we're going to make investments in all three of those if I have anything to do with it.
You know, that's fascinating. And, and I wish, uh, first of all, I hope a lot of people, you folks at home, I hope a lot of people watch this podcast and hear what's going on in our great city. Uh, we just don't have a process to get all of that information out, um, and, and, or, or we do have processes and people just aren't paying attention. So folks, we're going to take a quick break. Uh, Linwood, you heard during the introduction owns businesses down here at the oceanfront. He's a good capitalist. So am I. We're going to take a break, a break for capitalism and we will be right back. And we are back. Listen, if you enjoy this podcast discussion, uh, please visit Elevate Your Leadership. Visit the, my YouTube page, Elevate Your Leadership, well, where you will find this discussion and several other discussions, several other fascinating podcast discussions that I've had. Also, that's for the video version. The audio version will be on all the, uh, traditional platforms. I'm on Spotify, I'm on Apple, Google, uh, so you can find the Elevate Your Leadership podcast, uh, on any of those forums. All right, uh, Linwood, so I'm going to jump into politics here a little deeper because I know an email came out just within the last couple of days that really, I mean, this was a hit piece on you. This thing said, you're a racist. This thing said, you're a, you're a good old boy. It says that you have participated in favoritism for developers. It was really, um, I think, a little bit over the top. But regarding this, uh, do, what, were you able to trace that email back to its origin or where did that email come from? And what do you have to say about that?
Well, there's actually a, a mail piece that, that came out over the weekend. It was from the Worth Remick campaign. And, uh, very unfortunate. Um, so if you look at his signs, they say, your interest, not special interest. And apparently it's about me. And as I've said, I have a lot of interest. My interests are all the, the neighborhoods that I'm advocating for and, and bringing projects for all the liaison roles that I serve in this city. And my interests are, are moving the city forward. But there were some specific charges in that mailer. Said a week after, or right after I got on council, the city, uh, had engaged in another economic development project. And that's all it said. Well, I don't know what that project is. I suspect it was the Pembroke Mall renovation. That's the only one I can think of. How that makes me a crony, I have no idea.
But that's the city's job to develop, to assist developers in developing, uh, you know, various parts of the city.
Not only that, anybody paying attention knows that malls are, are becoming a thing of the past. And we don't want abandoned malls in our city. So we, we are working with, uh, those folks over there to see how they're going to redevelop their mall. Uh, there was another charge about, um, having money for site acquisition for resort properties. And specifically the Dairy Queen, uh, project or property that Richard Maddox owns. Well, we're allowed to have a park there as long as he has a Dairy Queen. Richard is getting out of the business and he wants to sell that site. We're willing to pay him less than the appraised value of 13.1 million dollars for that site. The entire city council is behind that, including Guy Tower, who was a supporter and contributor to the Remick campaign. So to accuse me of cronyism when everybody agrees with that, and I think the public would be very upset if a hotel was developed on that 17th Park site because the ci, the citizens really treasure the little bit of open space that we have down here.
Absolutely.
At 17th, 24th and 31st. And hopefully we talk a little bit about Rudy Loop before this is over. And then there was one other allegation about, uh, spending $45 million to renovate a developer's hotel. I'm not sure what that, uh, refers to as well. Um, and then there was a reference to something that the city, uh, sold a piece of property in 2018. Not for what, less than what it was worth. Well, I was not on council in 2018. So they really are vague and ambiguous statements. I'm very disappointed in Mr. Remick. His name is on that, that mail piece. He stands behind it, but it's very weak. I'm going to run a positive campaign. I've got enough to talk about. They give me five minutes. I could go on for five hours.
Sure.
There's just so many neat things going on. There's so many people that want to get things done in this town. And I think I've developed a reputation that, um, people that want to get things done, um, like to, like to come to me because, I'm going to, I'm going, if I get invested in something, I'm going to do all I can to, to move it forward and, and, and advocate for it. And, and there's a, a method to that. And you build up your, like I said, ground up support. You work with council members to build that support. You get staff on board and the key staff members. It has to make economic sense and, and all that sort of thing. But when you've checked off all those boxes, then you have a chance to succeed. And, and there's a number of issues that we're going to work on. So yeah, I, I look at that as politics. Um, it gets a little tiring after a while. It's probably why a lot of good people don't want to run.
It's one of the reasons I don't want to. I mean, it, it clearly, you know, your, your kids watch the news and hear all these terrible things about you.
Yeah. So there's an old saying in politics, which really helps ground me. You're never as good as people say you are, and you're never as bad as people say you are. And so I just try to stay right down that middle lane and ignore either side and what they're saying. I don't believe I'm the greatest thing since sliced bread, and I don't think I'm the worst thing either. And I'm just going to stay on my course.
Yeah, you know, and it is unfortunate that, uh, you know, in politics, especially during campaign season, attacking your opponent. Unfortunately, it's been like that forever, but, um, but attack, rather than prove your worth and prove your value, you know, this trend in attacking your opponent is just, um, it, it, it distracts and, and they're, uh, these ads are not true. You know, I'm watching the Loria for the second congressional district. I'm watching the Elaine Loria and the Jen Kiggins. And Jen's been a, a guest on this podcast. It's no secret that, that I am a very conservative Republican thinker. And most business people I think are because we have to deal with the realities of, uh, uh, again, of business and, and people's livelihoods. But just watching some of these, you know, there's an add-on right now that says Jen Kiggins is a hundred percent against abortion, including in cases of rape, incest, or the, uh, the risk to the mother.
Right.
At the debate, Jen Kiggins clearly said she makes exceptions for those three cases.
That's right.
So, uh, so just the way this, um, the, these campaigns are managed in that regard is, is a little bit disappointing.
It is disappointing, particularly when your record's distorted and, um, you just have to rise above it and, and just keep moving. But that, that, that's the worst part of it. And then you have to make a decision. Do I respond to it and start going down that? Because you know, when, uh, you get in a, a, a mud slinging contest with a hog, the hog loves it.
Yeah.
And both people get dirty. And-
Yeah, that's a good one.
And, and my nature is to be positive and, 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 and to move forward in that regard.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and, and I agree, there's just no winning in that situation. You know, there's no, like you said, at the end of the, the mud fight, everyone's got mud on them and, uh, there's no, no clear winner.
And, and Bob, the reality is, so the allegations that, uh, we do backdoor deals and shady government and all that sort of thing. There is no level of government more transparent and open than local government. No more than two council members can ever meet, talk on the phone. Um, every action-
I find that to be unfortunate because as I try to, to drive this ice rink project forward, I had to bring everybody out to our little old rink one at a time.
You gotta have multiple meet. It's exhausting.
Yeah.
Um, to, to get now up at the state level and, and Congress, they, you know, they can all get in a room together and do whatever they want. But this level of government, um, every action that we take is out in front in the public. So I don't even know where, when we put out things for public bid, like the Rudy Loop, it's a, uh, RFP, RFI, whatever process we use to solicit public bids. That's how we've done everything in this city. We don't sole source, we don't do backroom. And so to be accused of that, particularly by, um, folks that have no experience in our government, um, is disconcerting. And, um,
That's usually the case. The accusers usually just, they really lack knowledge and experience. And, uh, you, you mentioned the Rudy Loop. What's, what's going on there?
So many years ago, there was a plan for the resort area. The, the two most underutilized parcels of property in, it, it, down here at the resort is the dome site and Rudy Loop. And if you go take a tour of Rudy Loop, that prop, property is in abysmal condition also. It's a conglomeration of ideas that were, people had at different times. There's an old basketball hoop there and then there's some sort of sculpture hanging over. I can't figure what it is. And uneven pavement and concrete and crush and run gravel parking and the fishing, um, that we offer to folks, there's a little wobbly table where you can cut your fish up on and-
Lot of fishing down there.
Lot of fishing, lot of surfing. So our plan always was, let's get the dome project done, which we think we're close to. And then we'll open up Rudy Loop. We put out requests for interest, we called it, uh, in Rudy Loop. We didn't want developer spending a lot of money. We got four proposals. Uh, Bruce Smith, who really wants to mega develop that site, several hotels, residential retail. Bruce Thompson just wants to wrap, uh, some residential, um, where the parking garage is. And then, uh, the city's parks and rec department put forward an application and then Virginia gentlemen, both of those-
I saw the city parks and rec. That was interesting that that was part of that.
Right. So both of those are more of the open space amenity. So we are going to hire a consultant. This piece of property is so valuable. In fact, I was on the council in, in the nineties when Robert Herman, who had the Lighthouse Restaurant down there. And he had spent years accumulating his restaurant and then adjacent parcels. And it was time for him to retire and he called me up. He said, Linwood, I'd like to sell this to the city. I'd like you all to have first shot. Well, I got Jim Spore, city manager. We went down there, we met at his restaurant. And for six and a half million dollars, we agreed to buy all of that land down there. Well, that land is worth obviously a lot more than that right now. Over time, the city accumulated a couple more parcels. But I promised Robert Herman, he made me promise him that we were going to do something spectacular with this property and, and, and we want to deliver that. Now, I served on the city's resort area strategic action planning committee in, in 2017. It was all the players, the stakeholders, civic leagues, the business community, interested parties. The only thing everybody agreed to in that plan is that Rudy Loop needs to be a public amenity. And, and I have come to the conclusion, Bob, a long time ago, that you either have to go one way or the other. Trying to mix a hotel or something in with surfing and fishing just isn't going to work because you can't have surfing in front of a hotel. We don't allow it anywhere else. So let's enhance the fist fishing. Let's enhance the surfing. Let's enhance the parking down there. Let's run a, uh, the promenade, the Rudy walk all the way to the end of the jetty. So you can fish all the way down the end of the jetty, observe the surfers from behind waves. Uh, let's build sufficient parking down there. Let's improve it. Let's maybe have, uh, a splash park for kids, sufficient restrooms. But whatever we do, this is really the ground up opportunity I talk about again, to get that public engagement. And as I walked all of the neighborhoods in Salt Marsh Point, in, in Shadow Lawn, in the old beach, uh, neighborhoods, uh, that was another almost hundred percent, um, response that I got, make it something for us, for the public. It's our last chance for real open space opportunity down there. So I'm very excited about that as well. And I think if we get the dome site, uh, to a more of a commercial use and Rudy Loop, more of a public use and one of these iconic parks like they have in South Beach Miami and, and some other places, I think we will have a new product down here that we're going to be really proud of.
Yeah. And, uh, again, three to five years, something like that, maybe 10 years, uh, you know, for, for some of these longer term things. But exciting nonetheless. Linwood, we could talk for hours or days, or people who know me know that I can talk until tomorrow morning. But, um, but what haven't I asked you? What, what else would you like to share with everybody? Uh, what's on your mind?
Well, I will say this, we look at ourselves sometime as a small town. But we're the 41st largest city in the country, population wise. We are a player, not only in the Commonwealth of Virginia, but the country. And when, when I look at other cities similar to us, our size, Minneapolis, Oakland, Portland, places that are having real problems with homeless and crime and things like that. And, you know, we just started, uh, the homeless task force, which I'm going to be a council liaison to. Cause you have to stay on stop at top of this stuff. I mean, this stuff, if you ignore it, Cause you have to stay on stop, at top of this stuff. I mean, this stuff, if you ignore it, uh, it, it just takes, takes over. And so we're going to be ever vigilant. But having taken care of those problems. And then the school system and these school board elections are going to be very interesting as well. One thing I've found out, uh, in my travels around the city is this vocational, uh, training for students is a big deal. And we've got a great vocational technical school up on North Landing Road that teaches these students how to auto repair and culinary work and air conditioning and plumbing. And they go right out and get these great paying jobs. But the capacity is such that we have to turn kids away. I want to really get in and, and see that we, uh, build a capacity that we aren't turning kids away. Cause number one, the jobs are out there.
Oh, the trades are huge.
And we need that. But if we try, you know, it's the old thing, if I give you a fish, you can eat. But if I teach you how to fish, you're good. We teach these skills because not every kid's going to college. And college maybe isn't all that it used to be, a college degree.
I, I wasn't ready for it at the age of 18.
Well, there you go.
I had to go on and do other things.
There you go.
I was on the, uh, 15 year degree plan.
So my goal is we don't turn any kids away. We have sufficient, uh, resources for these training. And then just hooking them up with the jobs is, is the easy part. Once they get the training. So we don't have the problems that other cities our size have. We have opportunities to launch us into becoming even better than we are. You know, I served under a mayor, Will Sessoms, who used to call us the greatest city in the world. And he believed that, and I believe that. But I believe if we get some of the things done, we're talking about, we really are going to be the greatest city in the world. And, and, uh, that to me is the charge that, that I think I have if I'm elected in November.
Well, that's great. That's great. Linwood Branch, uh, thank you so much for visiting, uh, the studios of the Elevate Your Leadership Podcast. High atop the facility of iFly Virginia Beach overlooking the Atlantic Ocean. And, uh, great to have you here as a guest and good luck in your election.
I appreciate that, Bob, very much.